Good evening and welcome to this, the April 25th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Let the roll call show that all members are present and accounted for with the exception of Loreen Turner. Councilmember Turner is excused for tonight. If you'll please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And now we have a presentation from the Art Commission. The Livermore Commission for Art, we have, Monja Lynn will be presenting.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and City Council. We appreciate a few minutes on the agenda this evening to give a brief update on behalf of the Commission for the Arts and also to thank you for your ongoing support for public arts in Livermore. It covers the visual arts, the performing arts, literary arts, history and science in our community, and this commission is responsible to the city council for recommending our annual public art priorities budget, for reviewing the proposals that come for public art grants, and for approving privately funded proposals also for art in public spaces. The city of Livermore has a public art collection that's been longstanding. It continues to grow along with the community. The collection plus private developer artwork in public areas were compiled this year into a public art guide on the city's website, both a Google map and PDF versions, and we'd like to provide a copy to the city council for reference if you would. Do you have them? Oh, wonderful, thank you. The commission is considering how this public art guide could be expanded into perhaps a visitor handout, maybe even a walking tour of the downtown area. And if you look in the, in the guide, you'll see that the installation dates are there, and per this update, you can see the public artworks that were approved by the commission over the past year, and I'll just go through a few that mentioned them. First, there are two utility box murals this year, the dog and the picnic, the bronze sculpture taking flight at the premium outlets, the siren tower and the journeys of imagination sculpture at the Livermore Airport, the Sunday with Jesse sculpture that was donated recently by the Harringtons, fire station number nine, the exterior wall art that was just installed, and 12 pieces of public art at Sage Community under development by Shay Holmes. It's interesting to see the link between public art and attracting Livermore residents explicitly now at the Bart Station where the Sage Community advertisement features one of those new art pieces. In a similar vein, there's nice excitement right now about the downtown sculpture RFP that you all approved in January. Thank you very much. There were 161 proposals in response to that RFP. The review includes a community panel, and up to four of those sculptures will be brought for the city council approval as soon as May. Other commission programs and activities this year were the Art in the Schools RFP, which you also approved in January, which has already resulted in two cultural arts performances, a Shazanami African program at Emma Smith Elementary School just last week, and a California Theater Program at Maryland Avenue Elementary School the week before. We had city awards at the Livermore Art Association Spring Art Show, which are now on display at the city offices over the next month. There are annual high school scholarship awards, an approval of the Wheels, Grenada High, Bus Shelter murals, which I'm thinking we may want to add to the public art guide on the web. Mini grants supported the after-school fiddle club by the Livermore Amador Symphony, the Taste of Africa event by Shazanami Foundation, the Ballet on the Green and the Sunset Soiree Dance Performances by Livermore School of Dance, and the upcoming art expo taking place at the Bothwell Art Center on June 11th. Last but not least, we worked with staff to revise the Art in Public Places Policy and Procedures Manual, which had been in place for over a decade. Looking forward, one commission goal is to increase our communication across the Livermore arts community, beginning with an advertising campaign on the new grant schedule with June 1st and September 1st opportunities to ensure broad access to the city funds. The commission is actively working on our public art priorities for recommendation to you all for next fiscal year. Our April monthly meeting is tomorrow at 4:30 at the library and is open to the public. And as we're looking at these priorities, we're paying attention to sustainability of funding for public art since we know that the underlying development project fees will vary unpredictably by year. Finally, we'd like to look at possible ways that we might even include a local college student as a member of the Commission for the Arts. Perhaps will require a two-year term, but a member like that would help keep us on our toes. So, thank you again for the time to provide you with an update by the Commission for the Arts and for all of your strong support for public arts in our community. We really appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? I'll tell you, this, I'm very excited with the Shay Project. I think that that's, really meets the intent of the art fee is that there is art throughout the community, and I think it's very exciting that they've chosen to put art throughout that, that community so that everybody can appreciate it, so they understand and they recognize how art contributes to quality of life, and that's what you and the Art Commission are doing, and that's one of the reasons we've got such remarkable quality of life here in our community. So, thank you for all of your efforts. Actually, I walked into my office a while back and one of the, there was a Post-it note on the wall and it said, "This piece of public art has been moved down into the lobby," except that it was mine. It wasn't public art. It was actually mine. But it was, it was, it was pretty, pretty good work, so I can see why they wanted to put it on grand display. So, I eventually got it back, however. Moving on to the Citizen Forum, I have one card, Don Meeker.
Don Meeker, soon not to be 2589 College Avenue. I want to talk a little bit about previous historians in Livermore. The first one that comes to mind is Janet Newton. Now, she was the one who got the History Center and the gallery into the Carnegie Building. And in 1978, when Proposition 13 was passed, they were not earning enough money to pay the rent. In fact, Proposition 13 hit a lot of programs, organizations that were no longer, were no longer able to reside in buildings for free, they had to start paying rent. When I first joined the Historical Society, one of the first people I met was Gary Drummond and his wife Anna Sig. And I asked Gary, "How do you, how did you learn so much about Livermore history?" He says, "Read the newspapers." Now, newspaper history for Livermore goes back to 1869 with the Alameda County Gazette, and the Livermore Enterprise was published first in 1874. And these newspapers have been indexed by Barbara Bundshaw, so searching those newspapers becomes relatively easy when you're, and she would do it on the topic heading. She did a very nice job with that. My contribution to history was transcribing City Minutes. That started because I was at a council meeting one time and there was a great polarization between the council members, so I'm going, "Where did that come from?" I said, "Well, maybe it's in the minutes." So, I go to the minutes. I don't know where to start, so I start at the beginning, which in this case is May 16th, 1876, and I spent five years of Friday afternoons transcribing City Minutes up to August 21st, 1921, when I started typing them. And I remember that, you know, here I am sitting up in City Hall, and, you know, it's kind of an unusual thing for a citizen to do, to hang around that much. Staff comes along and says, "What are you doing?" And I'd show them, and then after a while, after some months, "What's happening now?" And they, "How can you read that?" I says, "One, there's really a limited vocabulary when it comes to City Minutes, and two, it's context." And so, I was able to wade through most of the minutes without too much trouble. And then after a while, I decided, you know, "Why don't I just come to the council meetings and say where I'm at in the minutes?" And then after I was done transcribing the minutes, I just kept showing up. And I'm still showing up, even though in February I said I was leaving town, people come, "You're still here?" Yes, I'm still here. However, my house goes on the market May 18th, and starting next Monday, I'm going to be living exclusively in my van, in my van in my driveway, so I can't really say that I'm homeless because I have a shower available and I have a sewer that I can, that I can use. But the next time I show up, which will probably be my last, I can say that honestly because I really want to leave. Not, no offense to Livermore, but, you know, I, I can't really say what it's like to be homeless because I have a place to be, but it's really crowded in that van when everything that I'm, everything that I can get into it, it's full, basically. I just, I'm just jamming stuff in it till it's full. Now it's full. So, I share the sleeping bag with the dog. Good old Toto, he's a good guy. He's really cool. And there you go. Thank you very much.
Wish you all the best. Thank you, Don. That was okay. That was all right. Okay, moving on to, that's all the cards for Citizen Forum. Moving on to the consent calendar, these are typically routine items that are passed on a single motion. Does anybody wish to pull any item for comment or discussion? Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Gary, second, Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to 5.01, this is the, related to the Fire Hazard Abatement Program. We have Fire Marshal Ryan Rucker to deliver the staff report.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Ryan Rucker, Fire Marshal for the Livermore Pleasant and Fire Department. On March 14th, 2016, the council adopted Resolution 2016-26 declaring existing conditions of growing weeds, accumulated refuse, rubbish, or dirt on private property streets and parkways and some sidewalks adjacent to each parcel of rural property are a public nuisance and should be abated. Partial owners have been advised to abate weeds and debris which constitute fire hazards. Abatement standards have been mailed to owners or posted conspicuously on their properties in cases where mailing addresses were insufficient. Property owners can avoid enforcement by the city by completing abatement work in accordance with guidelines or protest the need to abate hazards at this public hearing. Staff recommends that the city council consider any and all protests, and if council finds it appropriate, adopt a resolution overruling protests and direct staff to proceed with necessary weed abatement on all parcels requiring abatement. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, at that point, I'm going to open up the public hearing for 5.01. I have no cards, so I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
All move. Staff proceed with the abatement of hazards for the 2016 season.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gary makes the motion, seconded by Councilmember Spodovski. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And the opposed, passed unanimously. Onto 5.02, the Action Plan for the Home Investment Partnership and Community Development Block Grants. Here we have Jean Prasher and Ty Robinson, who present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Ty Robinson. I'm the new Human Services Specialist in the Housing and Community Services Division. Tonight's staff is making three recommendations for your consideration and approval, the first being to approve the city's annual action plan for fiscal year 2016-17 for both the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs, more commonly known as CDBG and home programs. Second, to approve and authorize the annual plan submitted to Alameda County for inclusion with the Alameda County's Home Consortium Annual Report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And third, to conduct a public hearing on program activities identified in the city's annual plan as required by HUD. The annual action plan describes each of the 26 grants that the council approved at the April 11th council meeting and documents how those funding allocations will meet the city's five-year consolidated plan goals to serve over 10,000 Livermore low-income residents. Thank you, and staff is available to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for staff? You're just, just doing a great job.
Thank you.
It's a tremendous amount of need in the community, and how you guys sort all of that is tremendous. So, with that, I'm going to open a public hearing, and again, I have no cards. There's someone who wishes to speak, that'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Also move, thank them for their good work.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Warner, seconded by Vice Mayor Gary. This is kind of rolling through here. Any discussion on the motion? Anyone opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Bear with me for just a quick moment here. Okay, moving on to matters for consideration, 6.01, the update on the council goals and priorities.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers. This evening, we have a mid-process update for you on your goals and priorities. As you know, each two-year cycle, the city council begins by adopting a set of goals and priorities for the coming two-year program. This set of goals and priorities aligns with our budget years and also aligns with our election season so that each new council gets to adopt a new set of goals and priorities for their working period. Current council adopted these goals and priorities as a part of their initial goal setting, and as you can see from the dates there, we are in 2016, so we're not quite halfway through the process at this particular point here. You can see that there are six goals there, from, ranging from completing the Downtown Specific Plan, encouraging business and expanding the revenue base, ensuring long-term financial stability, implementing regional transportation projects, developing water reliability and conservation strategy, and maintaining quality of life. We're going to quickly go through and highlight some of our progress to date. Many of these goals are long-term, and the priorities therefore then are substeps under that, which have individual parts that can be accomplished during this two-year cycle. So, we wanted to give you an update on the, the items that we are making progress on at this point. The first goal is to complete the Downtown Specific Plan. The Downtown Specific Plan was adopted in 2004 and a major catalyst to the change in downtown. Based on extensive community feedback and workshops, the goals of that were to concentrate growth in the core of the downtown, to delineate the density and height, allowing essentially things at the core to be taller and more dense, to essentially leverage off transit, and to fundamentally reorient how we organize the downtown vis-à-vis traffic impacts. Like much of the community, the downtown had been organized around a level of service standard, which essentially gave right-of-way and predominance to the automobile in our central core. The Downtown Specific Plan essentially exempted downtown from the level of service standards, essentially flipping that on its head, making the pedestrian the most important transportation mode in downtown. And that change, along with a number of physical improvements, fundamentally changed the character of downtown. First Street went from a four-lane truck route to essentially a two-lane, slow-speed, low-impact, very livable space that now has thousands of pedestrians on weekends where before there were two, and so we've actually had a fairly dramatic improvement in that particular item here. Moving forward, one of the key goals of the Downtown Specific Plan was to encourage housing down and within downtown, and the concept there were several-fold. First of all, as you know, it's our goal to provide housing opportunities to all age groups within the community. Our 18 to 34-year-olds have been having a tremendous difficulty becoming members of the community during the last 20 years. During the last 10 years, that has accelerated. By creating a housing type which is by its very design more affordable than our typical single-family detached home on a large lot, this allows a very key part of our community to actually either maintain their residency here in the community if they grew up here, or when we're attracting young people to the community to allow them to live here locally. The, the next item is that our Downtown Specific Plan calls for rental housing as we move forward here. We have not been to, built a market-rate rental project in over a quarter of a century in the community, and that's slowly causing our community to become unbalanced. In fact, rents versus ownership costs now are out of proportion to the size of unit and the amount of units available, showing that we essentially have a fairly dramatic shortage of rental product in the community. So, it's very, very expensive to rent on a per-square-foot basis in the community. The specific council goal was to move forward with two key projects moving forward. One is a downtown hotel project, and the second is a housing and commercial mixed-use development. Those two RFPs, or Request for Proposals, were developed during early 2015. The council reviewed them and finalized those approvals in July of 2015. Finalists were interviewed during a two-day public hearing process in January of 2016, and the remaining finalists will present refined proposals in May of 2016. So, while we have been working on this for a year and a half, it is obviously a process that has a lot of community involvement, and we want to be very careful as we move forward on these two key projects. After final selection of both a hotel developer and a mixed-use residential-commercial developer, the council will direct staff to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement for each of the facilities or each of the properties downtown. In addition to these two large-scale projects downtown, an additional parking garage will be constructed, and that will be constructed prior to development of what some people call the old Livermore Village Site or the Ale House Parking Lot, if you will. Essentially, some of us can actually remember there being a shopping center there at one time, but for those who have just arrived in the center, they believe it was always there provided just for the Ale House. Not true. But we will actually place a new parking garage that has more capacity than that existing flat dirt and paved lot, and that will happen as the first phase of these multi-phased projects. And that essentially will involve a $17 million investment of city resources to replace and enhance that parking. The second goal has to do with encouraging business and expanding revenue base. As you can see on the screen there, we are highlighting the Premium Outlets Phase Two. It was a 200,000-square-foot expansion, it opened in the fall of 2015. Livermore is now home to the largest outlet mall in the state of California. It had over 7 million shoppers last year and has 50 new stores. And new stores include a veritable who's who of outlet shopping from Jimmy Choo to Ted Baker London, Tori Burch, and Versace, just to name a very few of the, of the stores out there. As far as commercial enterprises, our outlet center now, as far as visitations, is the third-largest commercial, most visited commercial enterprise in the United States, third only to Disney World and Disneyland, which are one and two. These are commercial enterprises. This excludes things like national parks, other things that don't have to do with buying and selling stuff. But as far as commercial destinations, 7 million shoppers represents a pretty big visitation rate. Over 50% of the, the visitors to the outlet arrived by bus, so although parking's always at a premium out there, most people don't even come by car.
Wow.
And just if you were wondering if we had forgotten about the rest of the community, downtown has experienced continued strong activity during the last year and a half as well, with additions including Backyard Bio, Mario Links in Hops, Green Soap Bath Shop, Espresso Rosetta, Salon 2152, and Bee Inspired Designs. These one-of-a-kind or very small-scale chains add to the distinctiveness of our downtown. I think we arguably have one of the strongest downtowns in the East Bay now as far as the quality and range of opportunities that are in the downtown. When you add together our unique commercial activities along with our dining and beverage opportunities, layer in the arts opportunities from the movie theater to the bankhead, we really do have an extremely successful downtown for a community of our size. We are a destination in the Tri-Valley as we ultimately provide the kind of experience that causes people to, to visit us and to visit repeatedly. If you happen to be lucky enough to live here, it really is quite wonderful virtually every day of the week. You'll see tremendous activity in our downtown. Lest you think we only deal with commercial activities, the city has been very busy attracting other types of businesses, including several very large-scale at the Oaks Business Park. We have essentially the Trammell Crow Logistics Center, which involves three modern, high-efficiency fulfillment facilities totaling 1.3 million square feet, deals with major folks who use fulfillment centers, we believe are only just a few weeks away at this particular point. So, the, the Trammell Crow folks really did hit the market at the particular spot in the market, which is the sweet spot. We're expecting those new businesses to generate over 420 construction jobs and 700 long-term jobs. In addition to the fulfillment center, you see on the right-hand side their Gilig Bus Company. They're moving from Hayward. Their almost 560,000-square-foot facility will be manufacturing buses, and it will also be their corporate headquarters. Together, this is the largest builder of publicly-owned buses in the country, so essentially, these folks build more buses that are owned by public agencies than anyone else, and we are extraordinarily proud to have them, not only because of the high quality of the product they produce, it's almost universal demand across the United States, but the highly-skilled technical workforce that it brings with us. Many of those folks already live here in Livermore or the Tri-Valley, so we're very happy to cut their commute, sometimes dramatically and certainly in half. And that has been a part of the labor force that we've had, some real difficulties attracting. We do very well at the very high end of the spectrum. If you have multiple degrees, you're in technology, you work in a laboratory, you're a professional, we have a lot of opportunities for you. If you are in the service sector, or you do food and drink, or you work in retail, there are many, many jobs for you. That middle part, however, between those two parts has been one we've really struggled with, and so we are particularly pleased to bring Gilig into the fold here in Livermore. In addition to the new businesses coming up out of the ground, we've done a tremendous amount of other activities. Technology-driven economic development and essentially IGATE, which is our downtown nonprofit, which is a nonprofit made up of the laboratories in the Tri-Valley communities, continues to incubate some of the very best small businesses and turn them from great ideas into great businesses. It's very different inventing a product or bringing an idea to a place where you have a product idea and then turning that product into a great business. IGATE has all of the tools necessary to help those great entrepreneurs turn those great ideas into great businesses. And you can see up there that we produce an enormous number of events and serve a very large number of local entrepreneurs. We have a whole variety of programs, including feedback sessions, DARPA, our good friends in, in defense robotics, a startup den boot camp, the Small Business Training Workshop Program, monthly meetups, investor pitch events, where basically folks get practice in, in turning that great idea down into a, a saleable idea, and the local Lab Core Entrepreneur Training Programs. Workforce development includes a variety of other activities, including our Honor a Hero, Hire a Veteran and Manufacturing Day at TopCon. We work with community partners as well as federal, state, and county workforce agencies making sure that our local employees and residents stay competitive in today's rapidly-changing global market. Through regional and statewide job fairs, as well as assistant with recruitment and resizing efforts, we not only assist our employers, but also capture job opportunities for our residents. We also tell the world a little bit about us, and through our outreach materials, we put promotion and engagement so that people actually can find us, people know what we do here, people know what we're good at, and know actually what highlights there are in Livermore amenities, assets, and partners. We sponsor community We sponsor community events such as the Small Business Expo, Real Estate Roundup, and Innovation Forums. Our next goal has to do with ensuring long-term financial stability. While the first item we, or the item we just talked about, talked about bringing money in the door, this next item talks about being good, long-term stewards of the public's money. And as a part of that process, it's important for us to deal with our long-term as well as our short-term obligations. The council has adopted programs during the past few years that have dealt with fundamental issues such as balancing our current books, that is, making sure that we're not spending more in the current period than we are bringing in, but has also addressed several long-term financial challenges, and we've made tremendous progress on those, including our other post-employment benefits, as well as adding to our reserves, bringing the city back in balance, and making sure that the whole variety of items which we need to be financially healthy have been attended to. Now, those aren't sexy, and they're not particularly fun to do what's right and to pay all of our bills and to make sure we're being prudent and saving money for the future, but it's absolutely essential. For those of you who watched Game of Thrones earlier in the week, we all know that winter is coming. And for us, what that means is, five years ago, when I sat before you, I told you that we needed to, at that moment, at the bottom of the recession, begin to start preparing for the next recession. We are right now in the very positive part of the economic cycle. We're at the top of the curve. So we need to be, at this particular point, making sure we're making prudent decisions to both spend those dollars that are necessary to make sure that operations work, but also to not overtax the system and not overstretch the system. We're using a tool now, developed by the League of California Cities, that uses a thirteen-point checklist to try and visually give you a snapshot about where we are. So what you see up there is it's a five-year rolling program that looks at things in a snapshot. So just like you might imagine, green's really good. Everybody wants to be green. Yellow, you ought to take a close look at, there's something unusual going on there. Or it needs to be washed in red, it just plain sucks. So you don't want a whole bunch of red on your dog. You can see there in 2010, we were really ravaged by the remnants of the recession at that point. You see, it's a pretty mixed bag. We got a lot of yellow on that. As we move forward, in the next slide there, did the 2000 time period, you saw that our red disappeared, we have fewer yellows, and our greens are starting to make a comeback. All that hard work of doing the right thing over and over again, and making sure that the system is right-sized, and we're not spending more than we're bringing in, and we're saving for the future, start to show up in a color program here. Clicking one more time, moving forward to 2014, you see that now we're just down to a couple of areas that we need to be concentrating on. So as we continue to move forward here, we'll continue to use these relatively straightforward tools, as well as tools that are much more sophisticated, to be clear with the public where we are on our process, to be clear with all of you as decision-makers as to how healthy we are, and to help you all make decisions as we move forward here. You've identified additional long-term issues that we need to deal with, including our infrastructure program. We're bringing back continuing information over the coming year on that particular item. Another tool we've developed to help people understand where we are is our popular annual financial report, our [puff], because that just rolls right off the tongue there. It's a condensed financial overview. For those of you who don't particularly love going through dozens and dozens of pages, now I do personally. They're really good, they've got pictures on some of the pages, and the information is truly fascinating. But once you got beyond Doug and I, we were the only two people who were really reading that document over and over again. And so by condensing this down, we made a much shorter version that actually had all of the highlights. You had, we waded through all of the details and got you to the big important points, added graphics and other things, so that you could really understand at a snapshot how we doing, and how we doing compared to where we were. Regional transportation initiatives, also on the list of council goals here. You see up on the screen here that one of our major thrusts here is to bring Bart to Livermore along the freeway to Isabel. And to do that, we're working on a number of different fronts on that. We'll see in just a moment how we're dealing with the land use around the station, but first we want to talk about sort of the decision-making process to how do we actually move the project forward. The Bart to Livermore on the freeway to Isabel is the Phase One of a two-phase project, which ultimately wings Bart out to Greenville and ties into the ACE commuter rail system, tying two of our heavy rail systems together. Those two systems today, if you had to build them from scratch, would be over a hundred billion dollars to build those systems. To close this ten-mile gap will take about three billion dollars. A lot of money, but in the context of the system that exists out there, something that we ultimately need to do, because we're not going to be able to build a bunch more freeways in the next thirty years, and we're going to have a lot more residents and a lot more employed employees out there. The Altamont Regional Rail Working Group is a combination of the representatives from Livermore, Dublin, Pleasanton, Alameda County, Tracy, San Joaquin County, Lafta, ACE, and Bart, and they're working collectively together to try and come up with strategies to move the project more efficiently and effectively forward. In addition, we're working on the land use issues around the station. As you know, we've chosen Alternative One of the three alternatives that we went out to the community and got feedback on. That was the most popular one online, it was the most popular one in person, and it was the most popular one with you guys. So that's the one that's moving forward. We're bringing some other key elements from Alternatives Two and Three forward, including a ped bridge over I-580, three neighborhood parks, as well as other items from the other projects there. Council directed that we take a special look at our scenic quarter impacts, to take a look at our affordable housing programs, and make sure that the actual design of the project reflect Livermore's unique culture, process, and architecture here. We'll be bringing back an updated that program to you a little later in the summer. We're not just all about rail. We've got highways by the dozens out there as well. We're coordinating with ACTC, Alameda County Transportation Commission, on express and HOV lanes. You saw that those two projects, eastbound and westbound 580, just opened recently. They've been very popular with the new fast-track system out there, and they actually, from day one, have noticeably reduced congestion, not only in the lanes that charge, but in all the free lanes too. So it's really a win-win. It has cut the transportation time through the Tri-Valley significantly. In addition to 580, we're concentrating on State Route 84 coordination. As you know, the interchange was the first step to that. The extension of 580 or 84 improvements down to Jack London Boulevard was the next step of that. Ultimately, now we are working on the next stage of that. Construction of the South segment connecting Ruby Hill to Concanon Boulevard is just at the commencement stage. You see staking and some preliminary activity out there, and we'll continue to move that process forward. In total, two lanes will be added to the four-mile stretch, and that is the next piece of the puzzle. Ultimately, after the third segment of State Route 84 from Pigeon Pass to 680 is completed, the project will be four lanes all the way out to 680. Developing water reliability and conservation is next on the council's list there, and we have just absolutely knocked it out of the park as far as what was requested on the left and what we're actually doing. In addition, we're working with all of our partners here in the region to move the process forward, to ultimately find more sources and to better use and reuse what we already have. Maintaining quality of life includes a whole number of projects, including crime-free multi-housing project from our, including our police programs, vacation checks, Predpol Resident Video Surveillance Camera Registration Program, where if you have a video camera that actually just happens to get a snippet of the city right-of-way, and there's an issue in your neighborhood, we can actually contact you and you can provide us help. And that actually has worked on a number of cases. It does work really well, and we appreciate all of those who volunteered their video to us. Fire programs, including the construction of new fire station number nine, bright and shiny and just absolutely stunning, with a wonderful piece of public art on the outside of it, and state-of-the-art facilities all throughout. We'll be holding our dedication to that shortly, and that station actually is now fully up and operational and operating really wonderfully. Our emergency operations centers update will be strengthening our disaster response capability and be doing community education as we move forward on our items there. At the library, we've got a whole number of programs, including our Teen Academy and a three-week summer program that features personal finance, job search skills, local government, and become an engaged citizen. Staff's working with the Heritage Guild on the rehabilitation plan for Hegeman Farms, Sunflower Hill Community Gardens for food donations to Open Heart Kitchen, 4-H Clubs began an adaptive writing program. And we're maintaining and supporting neighborhood preservation. As of April 1st, 2016, Nextdoor membership has surpassed ten thousand people in Livermore, which actually means that there's at least one member in twenty-three percent of our Livermore households. And with that, I'll wrap up. There's a lot going on. Believe it or not, this was just a tiny snippet of the highest level. You've received the more detailed report that goes on page after page of all the activities that staff is working at your direction. We're very pleased to be able to give you this mid-cycle update, and we'll continue to work away on the goals that you have given for us for the two-year period.
Very good.
Staff's available for questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Don't have a question, I just want to say that what you just went through is incredibly impressive, and it's, what's also noteworthy is that it's really all good news, and there's a lot of progress. So I just want to thank you and the staff for all of your good work.
Vice Mayor?
Likewise, no questions. And please, the few department heads that are here too, Mark and Stephen extended the staff, our thanks. You know, there is a tremendous amount of positive work that goes on here, not just shown in the PowerPoint, and we receive very few complaints. And the reason why our residents don't read negative press is there aren't negative things falling apart within their city operating system. So just couldn't be more pleased to be a part of this city's leadership, and you make our lives easy because of the tremendous job that the technicians down in the trenches do. So please extend those thanks down. If no one else in eighty-five thousand-plus see it and appreciate it, we five do.
Absolutely. Congressman Spodrowski?
And I would recommend, if anybody's curious, read the staff report. It's twenty-two pages of items that have been thrown at staff. Basically, when I look over it, I think, you know, so what else you working on? It's what more could we possibly throw in there? It was a lot of work. I thought it was borderline too much back in 2015 when we were establishing all of our goals, just throwing things out left and right. And I'm very much impressed, if you look at the estimated completion column in those twenty-two pages, most are completed. There is a lot of them scheduled to be completed in spring of 2016, and it's just, I'm amazed at the pace, and there's nothing on there saying, yeah, we're not going to be able to get to it during this period. Everything's being accomplished, and it just, it reflects in the PowerPoint and in the city, and thank you very much for all the work that staff has put into it and the juggling of priorities. Because I know some tend to kind of go up in flames as you're juggling them, and you need to deal with it as the balls are in the air, so thank you very much.
Yeah, once again, the long-term financial stability, I mean, that's a remarkable trend, because having been here during the recession when it bottomed out, and it's even more remarkable, and just a really tremendous kudos to staff and to everybody that's actually doing the work here, because we've got a hundred fewer employees today than we did in 2008 when we started the recession. So the fact that we've been able to turn this around, accomplish the tremendous and remarkable things that we have, is all the more remarkable that we're doing it with fewer staff, and just really getting the most out of the resources that we commit. And thank you to all of the staff members that are really doing an incredible job.
Well, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I do appreciate that you understand where the work actually gets done. I get to sit in front of you here and talk to you and go through a PowerPoint, but it means that literally hundreds of folks have worked together in teams across sections, divisions, and departments to get these things done, and they do work very effectively and very efficiently and very hard, and we're very proud of all of that work, so thank you all.
With that, great, thank you. With that, moving on to six-point-oh-two, that's the discussion and direction regarding the regulation of commercial medicinal cannabis activities.
Thank you, City Attorney. Jason Alcall, your city attorney. Before you have a staff report, which has two reports attached to that analyzing the law, where we started late last year is the council gave us direction to go back, review the legislation, see what new developments there were post-Mimersa, the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, and what was available for local regulation. This is a dense set of materials. I do apologize for that, and I do not have pretty pictures like Mark does. One of the things, one of the reasons for that is this is just legislation right now. It's in the process of being implemented. There will be more information forthcoming, and we'll have more pictures at that time to share. Just to start, what we have is a historical regulation of marijuana in California. The first bullet point is the Controlled Substances, Substance Acts, both federal and state, followed by the Compassionate Use Act, Medical Marijuana Program Act was the first attempt of regulation, and what we have now, the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act. In brief, the Controlled Substances Act lists marijuana as a Schedule I controlled substance. What does that mean? It means that there's, by statute, there's no currently accepted medical use, and it has a high potential for abuse. Even under Mimersa, the disclosure requirements on something that will be sold through the commercial process, now being established by the state, will still need to disclose that it is a Schedule I substance. There have been developments on the federal side. The California, the state, I'm sorry, the U.S. Attorney General reduced the priority of enforcing Schedule I enforcement in those states that were authorizing medical marijuana. That would be California, Colorado, and the like. In 2015, Congress moved to defund certain enforcement activities in those states, and right now, the federal government is posturing that it may be revisiting that. In California, in 1996, the voters adopted the Compassionate Use Act. It's a voter initiative to allow access to marijuana for medicinal purposes. What did that do? It immunized three categories of people from prosecution, from state prosecution, not federal. Physicians who recommended medicinal cannabis, qualified patients, and primary caregivers. The Compassionate Use Act defines who the qualified patient and primary caregivers are. Qualified patient is someone who has had medicinal marijuana or cannabis recommended for a health condition. A primary caregiver is a person that has an intimate relationship with that individual and is helping them receive this form of treatment. Medical Marijuana Program Act followed several years later as the first attempt to regulate medicinal marijuana in California. It created a card program, established possession requirements and distance requirements. For example, you could not smoke medicinal marijuana within one-thousand feet of a school or recreational facility unless it was indoors. You could not cultivate within six-hundred feet of a school. The card program allowed compassionate collectives to be established, made up of qualified patients and their primary caregivers. Why is that important? Because as we move forward to Mimersa, it regulates the commercial cannabis activities, but it also removes that opportunity for card members to be cultivators, sorry, collectives. They can no longer be protected. Now, any cultivation has to go through the commercial process and be a state-licensed activity. Mimersa regulates commercial cannabis activities. We'll go through what those are in a moment. There are several state licensing authorities that have to basically approve the licenses at the state level, and it does immunize from state criminal prosecution both the qualified patient, primary caregiver, and those involved in the commercial activities who receive the state and local licenses. What are the cannabis activities that are outlined in Mimersa? Cultivation, manufacture, testing through licensed laboratories, distribution, transportation, and dispensing. What I'd like to do is just take a few minutes to go through what each of those categories are. What we have is a flow chart of how this will be regulated. What you have at the top here is the cultivator, who will actually grow the medicinal marijuana. That has to then go to a distributor. From a distributor, it can either be packaged for a dispensary for delivery to a primary caregiver or qualified patient, or it can go latterly to a manufacturer. It has to come back to the distributor, who will then test it through a testing lab, a sample, before it's packaged, deemed safe to give to dispensary, and ultimately given to a qualified patient. The distributions are these red arrows here. Those are licensed by the state as well, and this last blue arrow is not. What are the state licensing authorities? Mimersa created the licenses and says these commercial activities are licensed by these state agencies. Food and agricultural will license cultivation. Public health will license the manufacturing and testing laboratories. Consumer affairs will license transportation, distribution, and dispensaries. Each of these agencies is now in the process of developing a body of regulation and guidelines to help with the licensing and activities in these particular areas. In addition, the Mimersa created the Bureau of Medical Marijuana Regulation, and yes, its acronym is BUMR. So just get that up quick. It's responsible for the central clearinghouse for all the regulations. It's adopting a track and trace program. In theory, this will actually identify the plants themselves with a unique identifier that will follow it from the field all the way through to the qualified patient or primary caregiver. What is BUMR required to do? It may convene an advisory committee to develop regulations and standards, so that's not required, but it's permissive, but it must contract with the California Medical Research Program to study the impacts of medicinal cannabis on motor skills. Program to study the impacts of medicinal cannabis on motor skills. A whole slew of other state agencies are in the process of adopting regulations as a backdrop for the Mamursa. You've got OSHA for those workers who will be working in these commercial environments, along with the State Labor Board setting their requirements, State Water Resources Board with regard to cultivation, as well as a Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, that's been a big issue with grows up in state parks and its federal parks, the Medical Board of California dealing with the, the doctor side of this, the physician side. That's one thing Mamursa did do that neither the CUA, the MMPA, has really hold doctors accountable. Right now, the doctors have to have an intimate relationship with their patients beyond the act of simply prescribing medical marijuana, medical cannabis for them, as well as the fishing game will be adopting regulations. Now, into the individual areas, cultivation is any activity basically with growing this, this is your agricultural component. Mamursa does not allow licensed, state licenses for any facility over 22,000 square feet or less of total canopy size, canopy size, and that's licensed by the Department of Food and Agriculture. Cultivator may transfer medicinal cannabis only to distributors, must be tampered, you'll see this quite consistently, must be sealed in a tamper-evident packaging, so it goes from place to place and licensee to licensee in a trackable fashion to make sure there's no loss of product. Other factors relative to cultivation, they're important to us. The regulations do not apply to personal cultivation, now that's qualified, that's personal cultivation by a qualified patient or primary caregiver. However, Mamursa does allow city and local, local agencies to regulate that if they so choose. If the city were to adopt an ordinance regulating crops in general, that would now need to have approval by the California Department of Food and Agriculture. The distributor needs a person engaged in business of purchasing medical marijuana from a cultivator or a manufacturer, that's your central clearinghouse. They're the ones who are tasked with packaging, sending the samples for testing, and ultimately making sure the labeling is appropriate before it is distributed to a dispensary. This is your last touch before it goes to a dispensary and ultimately to, to a buyer. They're licensed by the Department of Consumer Affairs. And manufacturers, anybody basically that transforms the medical, the agricultural crop. They could either be putting into foodstuffs, reducing it down to oils, that's regulated by the Department of Public Health, and that's probably of the areas, one of the areas that's least defined right now is manufacturer as well as the testing, which we'll get to in a moment. Testing must be, medicinal marijuana must be tested in a licensed testing facility prior to retail sale or dispensing before it's left, leave the distributor. Mamursa does not define the testing, but licensed, it does define what's required for a licensed laboratory. Again, this is regulated by the Department of Public Health. Laboratory has to meet these standards, which those of us in the room who are scientists, me not being one of them, will understand what this means, but that lays the foundation to make sure that the testing is appropriate, has checks and balances in place to make sure that the result, which is the certificate of analysis, is accurate. The state statute Mamursa says that this, this certificate must have certain information disclosed as far as testing, which is the chemical profile of the, of the ingredients in the particular sample, any existence of any contaminants, and residual values of any volatile organic compounds. That's all it says so far. The Department of Public Health is now charged with going forward and finding what is appropriate for medicinal cannabis, what are the appropriate standards, what is toxic, what's acceptable, what's usable. Those have not been established, but that's what they've been tasked with, with creating. Transportation can only go through, is a licensed body again through the state, which can deliver the cannabis between the cultivator, the distributor, the manufacturer, testing, and down to the dispensary. They have to be licensed. There are certain things in place that have to, that they need to have to show that they are able to carry this. They have to have shipping manifests and it must maintain a physical copy with them as they're delivering, so they know that they are within the licensing scheme. Dispensaries are defined as any facility where medicinal cannabis is offered for retail sale. This is to your, this is getting to the end, the end user, the qualified patient and the primary caregiver. Any delivery to those two must emanate from a dispensary, so that has to come from this particular location and it's licensed by the, the Department of Consumer Affairs. Dispensaries must have certain security measures in place, very fundamentally, they're not to allow individuals to remain on the site if they're not actually engaged in the purchase or sale. They have to have, establish limited access areas where just the general public can't get to, only those who are authorized to be, there can be, and must basically secure the medicinal cannabis. The Department of Consumer Affairs will be adopting additional regulations beyond these, but this is the framework that's currently outlined in Mamursa. Deliveries, now deliveries from a dispensary, the delivery must, personnel must carry a copy of the dispensary's license, so they know where you're originating from, their ID, basically their driver's license, and delivery request documentation. That has to be, that they received a request or had a sale to a qualified patient, primary caregiver, that has to go with this person as they leave the dispensary and go to deliver that. Also, qualified patients and primary givers must have their receipt, basically it's a dual-key system. Local regulation, what do we have? Section seven of Article 11 of the California Constitution is your police power. That was originally recognized in the Compassionate Use Act and the MMPA only through statute, through case law. That was established, we knew we had the authority, the California Supreme Court upheld that authority, it is now explicitly stated in Mamursa, so that question has been asked and answered. Right now, for local regulation, how does that work with state? It requires both a state and a local license for any of those activities that were enumerated, those, those commercial activities. In order to be prior to applying for a state license, you must have a local license. Why is that important? Because the state will not issue a license if the activity is prohibited locally. Now, the state has indicated it will not be prepared to issue state licenses until January 1st, 2018. That's not a hard date set by statute, but just one that we've learned informally through conversations with the state agencies. I personally believe that's a bit ambitious, but if they, that's the date they've set for themselves right now. Livermore, what are, what are Livermore's current regulations? Currently, dispensaries are prohibited, that includes storefront and as well as mobile. Cultivation is prohibited. What is not prohibited is qualified patients for personal use of primary caregivers. Those activities authorized that they're doing themselves are not expressly prohibited in Livermore, whether it's cultivation or growing for themselves. What Livermore is now faced with is it can prohibit, allow, or conditionally allow any of the following commercial medicinal cannabis activities in Livermore. Again, cultivation, which is the growing of medicinal cannabis as an agricultural product, product. Manufacturer, the processing of that, that product. Testing laboratories, where samples will be delivered for testing to see whether it's going to comply with those standards to be developed by the Department of Public Health. Distribution, that's the, the clearinghouse that actually takes it in, does a quality checking, does a insurance review, does a proper labeling, sends it out to either manufacturers or receives it from the cultivators. Transportation, that's the transfer between those different, those, those different activities. If there can have, you can allow or prohibit or conditionally allow that activity within the city to emanate from the city. And dispensing, that says a sale delivered to qualified patients or primary caregivers. Areas that need to be addressed post-Mamursa, between now and the, the time the state actually issues, issues its licenses, it would be helpful if our regulations dealt with some of the areas that are not currently addressed. That's being manufacturing, testing laboratories, distribution, and deliveries from dispensaries located outside Livermore to qualified patients and primary caregivers in Livermore. By way of note, the city of Emeryville just introduced an ordinance last week to, they prohibit medicinal cannabis activities in Emeryville with regard to deliveries external into their city. They're adopting orders to regulate that, so they have to be licensed, they have to show that they're going to come in, if a dispensary outside the city is going to deliver inside the city, they have to register and show certain information before they can do that, engage in that activity. So what is the authority Livermore would exercise through? It's police power. One is land use, do you want to allow these uses in the city? And if so, there'd be, you have both land use authority to define what are the secondary effects and what conditions can you pose upon that particular land use. You also have the opportunity to adopt business regulations. Now, with that, you cannot go below the floors that are established by the state. For example, the state says you cannot have, smoke medicinal marijuana within 1,000 feet of a school. You could not set the, the distance at 600 feet, you could not loosen that standard. You could adopt a more stringent standard, make it 1,500 feet, 2,000 feet. Staff can go research that if that was an interest that you had. It's basically you're addressing time, place, and manner of the use in the business through a number of opportunities. With that, we're seeking direction on whether you want us to go back and research any of these areas in more in-depth and come back with information, understanding that some of these regulations, a number of these regulations are not yet defined. We do expect something to be coming out in the near future. There is a hearing being conducted by BUMMER in Oakland in the next few, in the coming weeks, I'll be attending that, and there are a number of agencies evaluating a number of these aspects, and cities are beginning to approach this, but right now, we're, this is on the bleeding edge of technology for those early adopters. But what we have, again, cultivation's currently prohibited, dispensaries currently prohibited, these other areas, we'll be looking for direction at some point in time to close. Delivery from a dispensary, if, as far as prioritizations, probably the, the top priority because some of those facilities and dispensaries outside of Livermore have been grandfathered in pending the state licensing. They will need to gravitate to the new state licensing process if they're currently complying with the CUA and the MMPA. They still need to get a state license when they become available. But right now, those facilities do exist and they're out there delivering to people in Livermore who hopefully do meet the requirements, either being a primary caregiver or qualified patient, but that's the, the immediate issue. With that, I'm available for questions. This is a very rapid review of a dense set of information that's in your packet before you. We have other staff available as well, we have the Community Development Director and the Police Chief if you have questions in their fields of expertise. With that, any questions?
Okay, very good, thank you very much. Questions?
Just have questions?
Okay, Vice Mayor?
I, I know it's speculative to even ask this, but in the training you've received so far from the League of Cities and other sources, if any one of a number of the propositions or the initiatives, excuse me, passed in the November ballot, was there any speculation as to what happens to Mamursa? Does it, does it blow it up? Does it radically have to be rewritten? You know, you hear touted about California quote, "going the rest of the way," so what's that mean to everything you just briefed us on?
Certainly, certainly. There are a number of initiatives out there currently pending, out listing signatures to see if they will qualify for the ballot. The one who's actually received 25% of the votes and, and so it's getting closer, I'm sorry, the signatures to qualify, is the Parker Initiative. That has two components, one that mirrors Mamursa very closely and another one which actually authorized the recreational use of marijuana. So there'd be a little bit of a dichotomy there, there would need to be some adjustments. But if you look to what has transpired in other states where this has been allowed, medicinal marijuana still continues to exist in different forms. In Colorado in particular, when they made it recreational, they authorized recreational use of medicinal marijuana. They taxed that as well and they had a number of regulations that aren't necessarily available in California. What that wound up doing is driving more people to the medicinal side. It was cheaper, there was a different process to obtain that, and once an individual had it in their pocket, it was difficult to determine since it's allowed recreationally, which body of law did they come by that? That would be something that Mamursa would hopefully address coming forward, but it didn't get rid of that particular market.
Thank you. I had a question related to Schedule I, since it's still classified as a Schedule I drug, the companies that are currently cultivating, manufacturing, testing laboratories, are they still restricted from banking in a traditional manner because it's a Schedule I? That's, that's one of the, the issues that I've, I've heard, is that if you operate a dispensary, most of it is, is cash-based because of the Schedule I, you know, the, the federal designation.
That is correct, that's a very good observation, which is, the federal government regulates both Controlled Substances through the Control, marijuana as a Schedule I drug, the Controlled Substances Act. They also regulate the banking industry through the FDIC, so they have a convergence of different regulations. Even though the direction was given by the U.S. Attorney General not to make it a priority to pursue prosecution of marijuana possession in those states that allowed medicinal marijuana, they did not give similar direction relative to the banking industry. So that is an evolving area, there is one group out in Colorado that created a...
A nonprofit.
A nonprofit, very similar to, I'm blanking on the term right now. It's not a full, not a full bank, but there are opportunities.
Like a credit union?
Yes, I'm sorry, there we go, credit union.
Credit union?
Yes, so they're looking at that model, but it has not been clearly established in federal law yet.
Okay, and, and you mentioned something about the, I, I was writing something down while you said the federal government's currently posturing for what again? Is it, is it de, is it changing it to a Schedule II or III, whatever the heck that means? Is it, you know, or, or was that in terms of enforcement?
That's whether it would remain, marijuana would remain a Schedule I narcotic under the, under the Substances Act. Right now, as it, as it stands, President Obama initially said that he wanted to revisit that and see whether it should be labeled as a Schedule II or categorized as a Schedule II, which it has ability to dispense through pharmacies and other facilities. I have not seen a formal action taken by the federal government, but there have been rumblings to that effect.
Okay, and that, that's the posturing, I thought?
That's correct.
I, I may have misinterpreted, I thought you were talking about the, how they've been lax in, in enforcing and, yeah, okay.
No, they have been lax in enforcing in California and other states that allow medicinal use of marijuana, but they have indicated they may want to revisit that, but nothing official has occurred.
Okay, thank you.
Congressman Warner, any questions? Just to elaborate a little bit, so if the federal government were to move marijuana from Schedule I to Schedule II or wherever they deem fit, then it would allow it to be an actual prescription and not a recommendation from a physician and that it wouldn't be allowed to be distributed through a legal registered pharmacy?
There is that, that opportunity for Schedule II substances. How that would coordinate with Mamursa is remains to be seen, but that is what's currently available for Schedule II substances, they have that vehicle.
Because if it goes through regular pharmacies, which is actually what I am in favor of, then you'd eliminate all the need for, for all of this. It would just be, you'd already have, have a dispensary for it because it just seems pointless to have a dis, you can buy anything at a pharmacy, you know, opiates, barbiturates, the only thing you can't buy are cannabinoids, so just to have all the medicinal materials available at the same, same dispensary, which is pharmacy.
Correct, so there's a legislative scheme that exists for Schedule II and right now with the Schedule I, there are none for marijuana, and that's what Mamursa's trying to address.
And just, I am a scientist, so I've worked with Department of Public Health for a number of years and to develop the testing protocols and the standards, that can take years, and the fact that they don't even have the testing requirements set up, that's, I know there are laboratories that do test for, for potency, but that's another thing that we'd be looking at is if you have, you know, tinctures and extracts and oils, standardization of those. And, and the staff report, we're looking at late 2017, 2018 at very best.
That's correct.
Okay, and there was an interesting, I, I read through the, the act and I didn't find the actual, where this went, but it said that a full set of fingerprints for purposes of conducting criminal history record checks. So, you have a complete set of prints and criminal history, but I didn't find where anywhere in the act, if you had a criminal history, it would preclude you from operating a dispensary. So you could have a criminal record and still operate a dispensary?
Correct, that's, that's what the licensing bodies are now wrestling with, which is what does that mean? And they'll be adopting their own standards and conditions relative to their particular licenses and what is acceptable and what is not.
Okay, so they, no idea yet.
Correct.
And I guess the last one is, how long did it take them to determine the acronym BUMMER? You gotta be inspired by that one.
They do have, they do have a sense of humor up in our state legislature, and we don't always appreciate it sometimes. One of the other bills, the MMPA, was Bill 420.
Right, right, and they worked on that one too.
They did.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, no further questions. I would have, I'll ask for everyone if you've got a blue card and you wish to speak, speak now or forever hold your card. Okay, if you could bring that up and hand it to the city clerk, I'd appreciate that. This gives us an idea of how long we're going to be here because we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be heard.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less so that everybody has an equal amount of time to, to speak, and I would also ask that, so that no one is, is intimidated, I, I don't allow any booing in the, during the proceedings, and since I have to give equal time to everybody, if I don't allow booing, I don't allow applause. And that way, nobody is intimidated because they're speaking to us and they don't see if, the reaction of the audience. So if you do agree with the speaker, simply raise your hand, and that way we can see at the council that people are of the same consensus. see at the council that people are of the same consensus, uh, but the, the person that's speaking, uh, isn't intimidated because they don't, they don't see whether people like or dislike what's being said. Uh, so with that, uh, I've got, um, I guess about 15 or so cards here. So, uh, start off with Robert Common, Kim McKay, uh, and Anthony Rangel.
Mayor, City Council, I would like to recommend that the city allow medical cannabis. Let it be, um, set to our regulations, make it easier for senior citizens such as myself to get their medical cares taken care of and not have to leave the valley and go into an area that, um, seems to have more, more problems. I want to feel safe if I want to get, uh, a medical cannabis and to be able to have it here in town. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Common. Kim McKay, Anthony Rangel and Maria Poulsen.
It's actually McCoy.
Oh, McCoy? I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and, uh, City Council. My name is Kimberly McCoy and I have been in the medical field for 20 years. Um, I'm also a medical cannabis patient. I have personally seen and, uh, the help that cannabis can give to the patients that I take care of. Um, most of them are very ill, in pain, um, or even suffering from invisible illnesses such as anxiety, depression, um, neuropathy, which is nerve pain. Um, and, um, I think it's really imperative that the people in Livermore have a facility that they can go to that's actually well-guarded, um, and safe for them to, to obtain their medication without having to go to say like Oakland, uh, San Jose, Stockton, places like that. Um, or, you know, it's kind of, um, sorry, I'm a little nervous.
It's okay. You're fine.
It, it's a little dangerous too to have, allow a stranger from a, a delivery company to come to their home if they're ill, you know? So I hope that you will consider allow a dispensary here in Livermore. Um, so it can change the lives of the people who are, who are ill and they can't go to Oakland, they can't go to Stockton and they, they need some, and if they can go someplace safe, it's, it's, it's just so much better if, 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 um, an elderly patient, let's say, has a safe place to go than have somebody else come to their house, you know? Because as a caregiver, I would feel that somebody, um, delivering to their home, if they're reputable, that's wonderful, but if they don't know them, it's a safety hazard. So I think having a place where they can actually go in, talk to somebody, have some place to sit if they need and talk to somebody would be beneficial for all of Livermore and all of your patients. Um, thank you very much.
Ms. McCoy, thank you. Uh, Anthony Rangel, Maria Poulsen, Amber Smyde Bush.
Good evening, Council, City Staff, everybody that's come out for the meeting tonight. This is wonderful to see. My name is Anthony Rangel. I am the founding chapter, or president of Grow for Vets Livermore, California. I'm also the founder of Nature's Remedy Collective, also the co-founder of East Bay Healing Alliance. Sorry, it's a mouthful to say. I would like to speak to you today though, as a resident of Livermore, as a father and as a concerned citizen. I've been doing this for 10 years. That's most of my adult life and not once in that timeframe have I ever once supported recreational use. I am doing this for the cancer patients, for the veterans that are suffering from PTSD, you know? As many of us like to throw around the 22 veterans a day number off of the 2012 VA study on suicide death rates among veterans, we throw that around and I think that's kind of odd in California considering that report did not contain California or Texas admittedly in the report, which have larger veteran populations than the rest of the states. This just seems absurd that we're pushing this. Uh, a lot of times, a lot of us look at it as 50 a day, you know? We're not taking into the contributing factors like adrenal addictions, you know, the veterans driving at 120 miles an hour, trying to recapture some of that adrenaline from being in war and we're expecting them to live their lives here among the rest of us like nothing ever happened. What I also know is that on April 21st, 1999, U S Patent Number 6630507 was filed with the House, the United States Patent Office, giving as cannabinoids as an antioxidant and neuroprotectant. It was last modified October 7th, 2003 and signed June 15th, 2004 by John W. Dudas. The, we are in the middle of an astounding phase change with the relationship of Amer, America with cannabis sativa and it's not really leaning towards recreational. And we hope to keep it towards medical. There are people out there, as I've seen personally, a four-year-old little girl that was deemed uncurable by Kaiser Permanente, now stabilized for seven months, even with a rare genetic mutation that does not allow her genes to oxidize production, oxidize correctly and heal. Or people with 72 hours left to live from brain tumors. They're still running around. Kaiser, nobody, John Mears, Sutter could accomplish this with common day radiation and chemotherapies, which do tons more damage. I apologize for running so close. I thank you guys very much and please vote to save our, our residents, our neighbors and our family members.
Thank you, Mr. Rangel. Maria Poulsen, Amber Smyde Bush, Josh Governor.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Uh, my name's Maria Poulsen. I've been a resident of Livermore and Pleasanton for my whole life. Um, I'm a single mom of a seven-year-old son. Um, just want to tell you a little bit what cannabis means to me. In last March of 2015, I was diagnosed with stage three colon cancer. I did 18 rounds of chemo, a bunch of chemo cocktails and eight rounds of radiation. One month after my treatment, I was told it spread to my lungs and it has a nine-millimeter nodule and it's now stage four incurable colon cancer. Radiation now will only buy me more time. I started cannabis oils right away because of the stories that I've read online. March 14th of 2016, I had my first CAT scan and radiation appointment was today. Today was my first CAT scan since I started that and that nine-millimeter nodule has shrunk and is now too small for them to even do radiation. Chemo failed me, but cannabis is now giving me a light to live and to stay alive for my seven-year-old son. The doctors told me I had months or years to live and now that's not even a thought in my mind. I know I'm going to cure this and cure this the way others have through cannabis. And all that I ask is as a cancer patient, is to be able to access my medicine safely in a community where I'm familiar with and where I grew up and I know the people around the area and I feel safe and to continue my life to be here. That's what it's done for me. Thank you.
Remarkable story. Thank you, Ms. Poulsen. Amber Smyde Bush, Josh Governor, Mike McCoy.
Good evening, Council. My name is Amber Smyde Bush and I am the co-founder of East Bay Healing Alliance and Vice President of Nature's Remedy Collective. More importantly, I am a wife, a mother of three and a cancer survivor. Many of you have already heard my story. I was 20 years old and I was diagnosed with cervical cancer. That cancer later spread to my uterus, kidneys and liver. I went through large amounts of radiation and the doctors told me that at the rate the cancer was spreading, I wouldn't see my son graduate kindergarten. My daughter likely wouldn't remember my face. They told me to go home and talk to my family, have a very real conversation with them, tell them that I love them and make the most of the time that I had because they weren't sure how much faster my disease would progress. That's when I decided that if I'm gonna go out, I'm going out on my own terms. I dropped radiation and I started a tough cannabis regimen. Over a period of eight months, I watched as seven tumors disappeared before my eyes. If only I would have had the knowledge and the education about what cannabis can do before I started those other treatments. I could, it could have completely changed my life. That's exactly why I joined this movement. I wanted to save lives. I wanted to let people know that despite what doctors are saying, it's not over for you. There are other options. I ask you Livermore, please don't believe the stigma. Cannabis is a real medicine that helps real valuable members of society. The state of California has passed these new MRSA laws to help with regulating medical cannabis and I think it's wonderful. Regulation is important for everyone's health and safety. I beg of you to reconsider the ban on local dispensaries. Our closest brick and mortar location is in Oakland, a place that I, as well as many others, are not comfortable going to. There are so many good things that cannabis collectives can do. Please let the money from these businesses come to local schools, police, community projects and our veteran services. Let us have a safe place that patients can come to learn and educate themselves so that they may thrive in their lives despite their debilitating medical conditions. Let me stand here as proof of what good things can happen when patients have safe access. I did get to see my son finish kindergarten last year. Not only does my daughter know my face, but she draws pictures of me in preschool. Not only am I standing here before you healthier than I have been in years, but I am 100% cancer-free. So I beg you to please stop this prohibition. Please allow people like me to have a safe place to turn to before they feel that there's no hope for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Governor, Mike McCoy, Sandra Common.
Um, my name's Josh Governor. I'm not really going to be standing up here too long because my legs just aren't gonna let me. Um, I want to let you know that I have multiple sclerosis. I was diagnosed around the age of 19. The doctors want to give me all sorts of different medications to just dope me up and just make me very lethargic and the one thing that actually keeps me going above all these medications is marijuana and it has helped me 100%. It keeps my attitude going very well and it, it's just been one of the best things for me. It helps my body out and, um, I really want you guys to consider the fact of getting medical use and medical or recrea, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, some sort of medical something going for marijuana. I beg you guys, please. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Governor. Mike McCoy, Sandra Common, uh, Rihanna McCoy.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Mike McCoy. I've been a structural steel painter for the state of California for over 16 years. I'm a Navy veteran and I'm not a medical cannabis patient. I have however seen firsthand how this medicine helps people. My wife struggles with great anxiety issues. My mother has numerous back surgeries. My daughter was in a car accident. My other daughter's cancer was stage three. Cannabis helped them all. I do not like the idea of my daughter having to travel to cities she isn't comfortable in and allowing a stranger into her home, especially with small children, my grandchildren. So there needs to be somewhere local that she could access this life-saving medicine safely. Dispensaries have a bad reputation, but they can do so much good. Aside from providing medicine, these provide support groups, peer counseling, community outreach and cleanup projects. They also provide taxes that can be improved your schools, roads and the beauty of our city. I ask you, Council, please consider the good that could come from this dispensary in Livermore. These patients are not bad people. They're just people like you and me. I'm so proud of my daughter. She dedicated her life just to help people. And to have a, a safe spot for her, for, to help other people would be the greatest. And I please lift that ban for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Sandra Common, Rihanna McCoy and Sasha.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Sandra Common. I'm a senior citizen. I've lived in Livermore since 1971. I was born and raised in the Bay Area and although Oakland is my hometown, there are certain areas I would not care to go to feel safe to have to purchase my medical cannabis. Uh, I have been diagnosed with P S D. I was in an armed robbery. I have stomach problems and this is one of the things that doesn't make me sleepy, put me to, you know, make me out of it, but it does. If I'm getting pains in my stomach, it makes it go away. And to me, that's most important. And as a senior citizen and have been, been held up at gunpoint, safety is a foremost issue for me. And so luckily we do have one availability in Livermore with some very, very good people. Uh, we need someplace where other people can actually go and feel safe and buy the medicine that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Common. Rihanna McCoy, Sasha and Barry Neal.
Hello, my name is Rihanna McCoy. One year ago, I was in a car accident that totaled the car and messed up my back. Prior to my accident, I've never used cannabis or wanted to try it because dare always told me that I was bad. After trying everything that was supposed to help the pain, nothing worked. And after watching the ways the staff at Nature Remedy cared for and educated their patients, I decided to give it a try. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
They gave me topicals to put on my back and that was the first thing that actually helped me. But it's still, but I still couldn't sleep. So they gave me Kiva chocolates and gummies that took all the pain away so I could sleep all through the night. If it wasn't for cannabis treatment, I wouldn't be working and still living off disability. I'm a cannabis patient and I highly support allowing dispensaries in Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McCoy. Sasha, Barry Neal and John Lustig.
Good evening and happy Monday. Um, all I really have to say is that I believe everyone deserves safe access to a healing plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Neal and John Lustig.
Very well. My name is Barry Neal, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm just here to basically reiterate what everybody else has already said. I mean, we're talking about a plant that's been around for 6,000 years. You know, the worst effects that I have known anyone is that they got sleepy and went to bed, you know? I mean, Livermore says they encourage business and want to expand their revenue base. That was part of the, you know, slide on all the good things that I heard tonight and which was very impressive. I mean, I was glad that I came because of all the good news that I had. And what I'm saying is being progressive, why don't we be a little more progressive regarding an herb that's been around for thousands of years, has helped, you know, countless people, including myself? I was a cancer patient and, uh, after seeing my options with, uh, surgery or chemo or radiation, none of them sounded very good to me. And so I became a, a medical cannabis patient and, uh, and now my cancer is, is clear. So the idea that it is even on a Schedule One, which says by definition it has no medical purposes, is absurd. And, you know, why that came to be, I, I think part of the pharmaceutical industry that, uh, loves, uh, making huge profits, you know, off of, uh, other people's, uh, misfortune. So I just question why alcohol, which in my mind is a dangerous drug and results in countless deaths and, uh, every year, that seems to be perfectly acceptable, whereas a relatively benign plant that's been around for, you know, millennia, uh, we're still having these prohibitions. It's, it's ridiculous. And the fact that a patient such as myself would have to drive to Oakland or, you know, San Jose to get some medicine, it's just unreasonable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Uh, and finally, John Lustig.
Good evening. I'd like to say hello to members of the public, the elected officials and the appointed ones as well. I respect and appreciate your intentions on having an intellectual discussion about supporting and assisting those in the community who are suffering. Everything I say can be validated through Google searches. Prior to the prohibition, cannabis had been used in the United States for over 200 years. The prohibition was created by racist corporatists and government officials who despised poor people, blacks, Chinese, Hindus and all other minorities, especially Mexicans. The propaganda and rhetoric created by these elitists convinced small congressional committees to pass legislation which set into motion the deplorable cannabis prohibition, which to pass legislation which set into motion the deplorable cannabis prohibition, which lies in the face of science, history, and philosophy. No matter one, social stature, their race, religion, or gender, if even one amongst us is suffering, that is one too many. Before the vote in 1996, the opposition emphasized two opinions. One, youth usage would skyrocket. In 2006, 10 years after, nine years after the vote, almost a decade, the California Attorney General Survey, which is conducted every two years, it reported the lowest percentage of youth usage since they began conducting the survey for 40 years, the lowest percentage in 2006. Suspiciously, Kamala Harris has ceased administering this test. Violent crime will increase, was the other opinion of the opposition. And in 2010, California reported a 40-year low in violent crime. LA, which had 1,000 collectives in 2010, reported a 50-year low in violent crime. I'm not saying that opening collectives somehow eliminates violent crime or minimizes it, but I am saying there can't be a direct correlation between allowing collectives and violent crime increasing. Individuals whose ailments span the gomit have reported incredible relief from their symptoms when utilizing cannabis. The medical community considers aspirin the most versatile wonder drug available unless the health professional is educated about cannabis. Every year, 450,000 people die from tobacco in the United States. 300,000, according to the CDC, from the side effects of sugar. 200,000, according to JAMA, the Journal of American Medical Association, back in 1998. 200,000 deaths from prescription drugs. That's 106,000 from as directed and 106,000 roughly from abuse. Every year, 85,000 people die from alcohol. Every year, according to the CDC, 50,000 people have heart attacks that are directly from trans fats, such as trans fats that exist in microwave popcorn, 50,000 heart attacks. 15,000 deaths from over the counter medication. Is that time, or is that one minute?
You can finish your thought.
15,000 deaths due to OTCs, I do appreciate that, sir. Hundreds, sometimes thousands, due to caffeine, milk, soy, peanuts, fish, hot dog, eggs, strawberries, all kill more Americans every year in the United States alone than 10,000 years of cannabis being utilized around the world. I have more to say, but I'll come back at a future date. Again, I do appreciate this intellectual discussion about this. There are individuals who are suffering out there, and we have an ethical responsibility to attempt to help these individuals. Thank you very much, all.
Thank you, Mr. Lustig. Okay, that's it for the cards that I have. So that I'm going to close the public comment. I have a question for our police chief, if I may. There were four dispensaries in Hayward, and yet the only thing I've heard is people have to go to Oakland or Berkeley or the like. There are no dispensaries in the Tri-Valley, is that correct? So none of the other cities in the Tri-Valley have elected to open dispensaries? But there were four dispensaries in Hayward, I recall.
I believe you're correct about the Tri-Valley, and I do believe there are dispensaries in Hayward.
Okay, I know that they were having some problems with a couple of them, so I know they closed one or two of them, but I wasn't sure what about the other ones, so.
Yeah, there's searches that can be done online that identify all the nearby dispensaries. And we have looked at that, and there are numerous dispensaries in the surrounding East Bay.
Yeah, but not in the Tri-Valley?
Not in the Tri-Valley that I'm aware of.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's see. Any questions? Okay. Vice Mayor?
Who to direct this to? The city attorney or the chief? We didn't hear any testimony about what to do between right now and the state MRSA regs being up and running. And I'll save those thoughts for a couple of minutes, but just where did MRSA leave communities like the Tri-Valley with nothing? Are they in limbo because everything else was suspended and grandfathered? Is it still the Wild West? You can look the other way and hope you don't get in trouble? What's kind of the current state of affairs under MRSA?
MRSA acknowledges and recognizes those facilities who are properly operating under the MMPA and CUA prior to adoption of MRSA. They allowed them to be grandfathered in and continue the operations in certain formats. Those agencies and those dispensaries and those operations would ultimately need to come into compliance with MRSA once the state licensing was approved.
Thank you. That's what I thought I heard and said, my words, not yours. Thus, the old model can't grow until the new rules, regs, and the new model is in place.
That is correct. There would be no, there's no opportunity to allow dispensaries now that don't currently exist.
Okay, thank you.
Until the regulations are adopted.
However, the patients or their primary caregivers, there is no prohibition on personal cultivation of marijuana, but only on the commercial cultivation?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's really a follow-up question to that. And so there are currently dispensaries that can deliver to Livermore.
Right now, our ordinance post MRSA doesn't expressly regulate a store-to-door delivery from outside the community to inside Livermore. Correct. And there was a search that staff had undergone to look at those opportunities in the Tri-Valley area, throughout the Bay Area and into the Central Valley. There were numerous opportunities available.
Is there any way to provide some kind of a local certification for those delivery services to make sure that they're reputable, that we know that they're going to be here? I don't know if we, you know, pull over, you know, dispensary vehicles and say, you know, and do whatever kind of check you would do, but is there some kind of system that we can, you know, create to, I don't know, for lack of a better term, certify a delivery service to say that this is somebody who's playing by the rules and somebody that, you know, if they're delivering to Livermore that we are okay with because we've checked them out?
So right now, just to answer your question, right now, we're reviewing the ordinance that Emeryville introduced last week, I believe it was April 19th. That, however, what I've seen so far is that it speaks to post MRSA regulations, somebody who has a state license. It doesn't deal with that window of time between now and the state licenses being issued.
Which could be a year and a half, two years, three years, moving at the speed of state and federal government, which is.
That's the first step. The second step is enforcement. How do those people get identified?
Right.
And how do you, how does the police department actually identify those individuals who are within that certification process and those that aren't?
And so Emeryville is the first city that we know of that's looking into some type of ordinance for that, but it's the post MRSA ruling?
Correct. It's unclear how that would apply to the current situation.
Okay. And so we're not aware of any other city that does that for deliveries to the city?
That's the one that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Question, so just on the timeline, make sure I understand it. So what we, we can't pass anything that has any effect until after the state has its rules together, is that right?
That is correct. Under MRSA, it's a dual-key system. You need both a local and a state.
Okay, so, and we're years away from the state getting its rules to the point where we could then act under them, is that right?
So far.
Okay, and what we're talking about tonight is not actually allowing anything one way or another, but simply you're asking where would, what more information would we like to start with?
Correct. The direction the staff was to evaluate MRSA, return to you where there were opportunities for local regulation, but also to explain the current state of the law, what's known and what's unknown.
Right, okay. But the end result for tonight is what areas would we like you to spend time investigating?
That is correct.
Okay, and then the other thought that occurred to me is that, you know, the question was just out there that Councilman Spodowski, I think, was getting to, if there are eventually other dispensaries out there that could deliver, and so it sounds like there could be some that would be maybe sooner or later. The one thought I had is, you hear about police departments setting up areas for people can do transactions off of the, yeah, or off of the internet. People arrange something, but then they get, you know, robbed of whatever money they brought to buy a car or something. So that's another option, because it seems that, you know, there's in the scheme of things here in the spectrum. One is that many times people have made compelling cases where the access to the marijuana is beneficial from a medical point of view. Then the question is how to best get that. So the lowest level of, that we could do here that would provide access would be to regulate the delivery from a valid dispensary. And then we could then facilitate that possibly in some ways if there's concern about the safety, but the people that would be doing the delivery would be regulated, and so they should be safe. And, you know, people get all kinds of things delivered to their door, pizza and everything, and they're not, strangers are doing it right. So there's, there has to be a way to maybe do that. And so I guess where I would say, the bottom line request is, where would you, where would it be most beneficial to get more information? Since we have a hole with respect to the delivery from a dispensary, I think that would be the highest priority for understanding more, getting more information. And the rest of it is years away, and it's so much influx, I don't know that there's any benefit to you spending your time until things get clear. The other thing that I would want to mention is, I was just, I didn't meet, I wasn't here at the last council meeting because I was at a conference in Denver, of all places, so I got to see some, some of the aspects of the unintended consequences for there. And so again, I would say we can be judicious in figuring this out, but I'm in favor of understanding more about delivery from a qualified dispensary.
We're also recognizing that this is a rapidly evolving issue, and depending on which one of these initiatives passes in November, this could be a remarkably different landscape that we're looking at today. And especially since it's going to be from, anywhere from 2018 and beyond until the state gets their ordinances together and their legislation. And it has to be both agencies, it has to be both the state and the local agencies needing the licenses and the permits.
Yeah, given all that uncertainty, I think the only thing that would be worth getting more information on would be the delivery. If that, I mean, but that's the one I would go with.
Sure, if we're switching over to comments or if we're.
So, it's more comments.
Sure. Okay, just, you know, I agree at a bare minimum. I would like the additional information and see what we can do about deliveries in town. It's, you know, it would help if somebody, you know, what local governments like to do is we like to, you know, find examples of somebody else doing it first and putting in some of the, you know, the time and the effort to see what you can do out there and what flies legally. But, you know, again, at a minimum, I'd like to see deliveries so we can get people the access to the medicine that they need. I, you know, I don't, I've never disputed, you know, people needing it or it helping anybody. I think if it works for you, that's great. If I was in a similar situation and something were out there that would help me, I would do, you know, what I could do to get access to it. But I think at a bare minimum, we should look at the deliveries. Also, the one, you know, I, I don't ever look at this issue as a revenue generator, and I think that's possibly where Colorado is running into some trouble, is that they're taxing the living daylights out of it and trying to make money off of it. And so just from my perspective, that's something that I'm never really interested in, is trying to allow either a scale of, you know, by number of facilities or deliveries or scale in terms of how much it's taxed in order to generate revenue. Personally, I don't know if you could sell enough to fix all of our streets and roads and funding issues. We're going into that right now. We're undertaking a very large study to figure out what that is, and I just don't think that, you know, I think if people need it, they need it, and we need to find safe ways for people to get access to it. So I am insanely frustrated at the length of time that it takes on the state and also on the federal level. There are many, as some of the people commented tonight, there's a lot of history behind it, there are many layers, there are many players, and it just, the higher up you go in government, the slower things get. And I wish we can take care of this next month and figure out, you know, a way to settle the issue once and for all and move on. But again, at a bare minimum, delivery to Livermore is going on right now. And if I'm hearing that it's not necessarily safe, what can we do to make an existing action in town safer for the patients that need the services?
Vice Mayor?
I think in many respects, two and a half, if not three of us are on the same page. I'll be succinct before I lose my voice this evening. First of all, I think like Councilman Spodowski, all but said the exact words, I'm in support of medical marijuana, that the time has come. We can debate till midnight, the US getting its you-know-what out of its you-know-what over being a class-one drug. Powers greater than us have made those decisions, and we're going to live with them for a while longer. I think we've also seen the country move on a continuum on several controversial issues in this last decade, and continues to do so. And we're all going to have to be patient a little while longer while we get MRSA up and running and we're dealt with what happens in November. I think there's two things, one short midterm, we could do to be a bit more proactive. I think the first thing is, and later if you need a motion staff, I don't know if you're looking for a motion tonight or just for comments. I'd be very interested in, as soon as possible, clarifying the ordinance and allowing delivery. And the legal team and the police team put whatever words you need to into clarifying that. I was also struck by the news story a few weeks ago of another Bay Area police department who literally striped a parking space for safe transfer locations, in this case, used items for sale. But I would be interested in the police department's thinking about, you know, out in front of the parking lot of the PD, establishing a safe transfer location. I think it's a little odd to say that delivery people in this industry are inherently less safe or trustworthy than other industries. I don't think we, as a government, are large enough to go into background checking and screening and other employees, employers, employees, that's a swamp we do not need to get into. But certainly, that will come with time and state regs and state background checks. Heck, our own police officers, firefighters, and paramedics are heavily backgrounded nowadays by the state licensing agencies, and I would think this industry will get there. So I'd be interested in cleaning up the local ordinance, so if a dispensary, or excuse me, whatever the current grandfather thing is, wants to do a Livermore delivery, they should not feel at risk by doing so. Second, along with Councilmember Spodowski, I'm not interested in permitting, regulating, or feeing that. It's just, however you, once we redo the ordinance, let people know that they could come in. The other thing I think this council should deal with, this council has dealt with an awful lot of testimony on the issue, and I'd like to see this council have the land use and zoning discussion for a modest dispensary. I'm not interested in the other activities under MRSA. I would be interested in a small-scale dispensary by zoning that would scale to the 85,000 residents, give or take, of Livermore. I'm not thinking the outlet and all the dispensaries. I'm not thinking the East Bay, you know, row of whatever. But I think, and we have trouble, depending on the zoning that's used, regulating quantity within zoning. I get that. And I just think this council's got a lot of information already on the subject, and I think later this year, if staff, would be my preference, later this year, to bring back, looking at the compatible land uses, looking at the zoning, looking at quantity limits to scale to a community of our need, and then let's have that zoning conversation, tee it up. So whether the state is faster or four years slow, when the state says you can apply for a permit, Livermore's not going to take then six months to debate if to do it, where to do it, and how many to do it. Why don't we just go ahead and have the zoning conversation now and say if it's the will of the majority of this council to allow at least a dispensary or whatever the scalable number is in our zoning, let's have that conversation. I just, I'd hate to kick that can down the road individually. I would say that, you know, I think, as you said before, the delivery and making it safe is the right thing to do, and as suggested, having the place where the police could supervise is the right thing to do. Again, I don't think there's any benefit to us, once we've gotten safe access available, that you need to go much further very quickly. And I think we need to pay attention to what the other cities are doing. And again,
And again, I've been in, um, and you, there are unintended consequences. And I don't think they become clear until you have a chance to see them. And I don't think, um, frankly, on that particular one, that Livermore has to be out in front. That there's, once people have safe access, we've provided the, uh, the key, uh, need.
One thing, Howard, though, I, um, I think that if, if this, if there is going to be a business operating in Livermore, that it needs to be revenue neutral. So there needs to be some sort of permitting fee or, or licensing fee. Yeah, that, uh, that we need to be able to recover our costs if they're going to be operating.
And I, and I, again, agree with Councilman Spodowski. There is, there should be no effort made to make any money out of this by the, by the government. Because as soon as you do that, then you encourage the black market and then you get a lot of bad things happening. So I think, you know, just there's.
Well, this is one of the ones.
Recover the cost, but don't try and say we're gonna, as we said, pave the streets with this or something.
Well, one of the things that we've found is, and some of the research that I've done is that, uh, there are communities where there has been the, the usual, uh, talk about, oh, it's a huge revenue, uh, generator. But in truth, it actually frequently costs more to regulate, uh, than actually, the regulation enforcement actually costs more than it, uh, it is that you're, that's, that's coming in. So it, uh, there's this great talk about a lot of money, but it's, doesn't materialize.
One, one quick item to add on, uh, to that discussion. If, if we can get examples, here, here I go again, uh, what, you know, what are they doing? What are all these cities doing? Um, if we can, if there are any case studies or examples of cities that have allowed that one dispensary to open and what kind of process they went through, um, you know, I, is it, you know, would you do an RFP or an RFQ process to make sure that you're interviewing potential operators? And we're screening to get the best of the best and, and people who are legitimate that have a track record? But, uh, at the same time, I want to see if there's any information out there. If you can do kind of a, a quick search, um, to see if, if, you know, what are the unintended consequences that, that may have popped up from, you know, a, a, a city, you know, offering, uh, a, a single dispensary or on a very limited scale in an area that possibly is devoid of any other dispensaries? Or are we talking traffic? Are we talking, you know, whatever, um, uh, crime? Um, I, I don't want to throw that out there because I don't like that, that stigma as well. But, uh, it does lead back to it's, it, it is, you know, it's, it's unfortunate. I mean, that it's, it's, you know, the schedule one, uh, you know, uh, creates basically an all cash industry, which brings problems in and of itself. So I think this is all good information to get out and, and, and look into in the near future.
Well, tonight we've certainly heard, uh, from a number of, uh, folks who are testifying the, the benefits that they have, uh, received from medical cannabis. On the other hand, as, uh, Councilmember Warner pointed out, uh, the unintended consequences. Uh, I've done a significant amount of research on this. Uh, there's a city just to the north of us, uh, that has a, a single dispensary. And eighty-five percent of their clientele, uh, are white males between the ages of twenty-five and thirty-five. Uh, so not a high glaucoma demographic, uh, not a high chemo demographic, but it's a high party demographic. And this is something that that community has had a very difficult time dealing with, uh, is the amount of, of impact this has had on their community. So I think there's a, a middle ground. There's, we've heard tonight that there's, uh, benefit to medical cannabis. Uh, we've also heard tonight that there are laws that are in place, uh, and that we are looking at a, a window down the road of, uh, uh, final resolution between both the state and the federal government. Uh, so, uh, as far as the, the, uh, just delivery businesses, uh, I think you've heard that we're looking for some additional information on that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, it would be helpful to have a motion. I think we did have some gravitation towards that particular item to return with you with more information and examples. And we can see what Emeryville is doing. I'm not sure we had consensus on anything beyond that at this point, but it would be helpful for staff to get a motion, to receive a motion.
So I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll move that, uh, staff investigate, uh, the, uh, providing a, a safe delivery options for the ci- uh, residents of Livermore. And that that include in, uh, come, getting back to us in information, the, um, what others are doing, what, uh, unintended consequences, um, may be there. I don't think there are many with respect to that. And also exploring, um, what it would take for the, um, police to provide a safe delivery spot if people felt the need for one.
Vice Mayor.
Instead of an amending motion, would the maker, uh, include a more, uh, prescriptive or tight timeline? There was no timing in your, in your motion. I think this is about a half a sentence change in the muni code.
Well, what, I'll ask what, what would be a reasonable timeframe and then let's make it that.
What I need to do is sit down and research and see how Emeryville address the issues of those agencies who are now delivering from, from dispensaries and how they vetted and to confirm that they are in compliance with the CUA and MMPA. With that, working with staff, um. Late summer?
That's about, yes, that's fine. Three, what's that, three or how many months is that, four?
Two to three.
Yeah, okay.
You're dark in August.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question, the city attorney? In there was implied something I didn't say, and I don't know if the maker of the motion included it. So we still don't have a second. And paraphrasing you, uh, Mr. City Attorney, what other agencies have done, you know, blah, 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 permissive. I wasn't interested in going there because that begat, begats a new bureaucratic cost and some kind of licensing. Mother may I, city Livermore has blessed this list of home delivery vendors. I'm only talking about eliminating from the, the muni code, the prohibition. If people want to do business with somebody, that somebody can drive to their home and deliver it to them or their caregiver, period. That's as far as I wanted to get into, um, a, a regulatory, uh, a mother may I, uh, arena unless staff thinks based on legal research, it's mission critical, uh, to do so and to get into the business of, of certifying, uh, home delivery businesses that are already grandfathered and they're grandfathered because they're out of compliance with MRSA. It just, it seems to be a slippery slope to take, to take that step. Is that what you were implying?
So that was, so where we find ourselves today is we have a situation, we have an ordinance that prohibits dispensaries and prohibits mobile dispensaries. Those were your lunch trucks. That was pretty clear from the legislation as it was adopted by the former council. What wasn't anticipated was a store-to-door delivery, similar to a pizza. So right now that's not addressed in our ordinance.
So there is no prohibition currently. It is not against the law to do that. But it's not explicitly regulated either. It's silent. So if your intention is to keep us out of that business, the great news is we've already succeeded and we're there. You're done. Um, if you want us to regulate that activity, that would take additional time. So if the answer is you wish us to basically have no regulations prohibiting that, nor any regulations regulating that, that is your current state of affairs. In other words, somebody can deliver in here and we will not seek them out and enforce because they are delivering. If they violate the vehicle code, if they violate any of a bunch of other rules, they're just like anybody else, just like the pizza guy. He can't go seventy miles an hour and he can't, you know, pile illegal things in his car, all of those sorts of things. But the explicit act of delivery is not prohibited in the city of Livermore. Microphone.
What, what I was intending, what I heard loud and clear was that the status quo was not adequate. People do not feel safe. So I'm not necessarily saying that we over-regulate. But what I am saying is what is it that we can do to provide this citizens of Livermore safe access through a delivery mechanism?
And I think clearly right now, between two policymakers, you have two very different points of view. We don't regulate pizza delivery guys, we don't regulate, you know, any other delivery service. And, and so I think there's one question, somebody's saying, let's do that. Somebody else I heard say, let's not do that. Y'all have to work that up there.
So we weren't saying do it. What I was saying is you asked to get information on what it would take and what makes sense. But I have heard that the status quo, where we're not regulating and we're silent on it, is insufficient. People do not feel safe. And so. What I'm saying is what kind of information can you bring back that would allow us to make the current situation, uh, safer?
And essentially that was the response you got from the city attorney saying, if you want more information on regulating that activity, we could bring that back in summer.
That's fine, that's what I meant.
And so now I need a second.
And I'll second that.
Okay, a question for the chief. So have we had any issues around, uh, medical cannabis delivery, uh, in Livermore? Have, has, have we seen any negative impacts from, uh, uh, from that type of activity?
Uh, we have encountered people, um, uh, making deliveries. The challenge here is, uh, you know, who's a bad actor? Are they legitimate? Um, there's a lot of, uh, people operating, you know, outside, uh, the lines on this, uh, issue. And so.
They're not necessarily a business, that they are a delivery person and they may be cultivating on their own and it may be their own personal commercial cultivation, which is not allowed in Livermore.
Yeah, yeah, it, it gets us back to sort of where we are, where we were, um, in the past with dispensaries. Uh, are they, uh, operating within the guidelines of the Compassionate Use Act? Are they, uh, delivering to a primary caregiver? Who is a primary caregiver? Do they have, you know, um, and so, uh, if we encounter that, we have to go through that whole, um, you know, investigation to determine those, those issues, to, to define whether it's legal or not. And so I, I hear what you're all saying and, and, uh, providing safe access and getting it out of the shadows. And I think that there may be, uh, some research we can do to, uh, identify who is operating on the up and up and, and provide a process for them to potentially, um, you know, get a, a permit or something that would, uh, they would be vetted in some way, that they're legitimate and, um, and safe, uh, to go to people's homes, uh, and deliver the product.
Cause I'm, I'm not necess- I, I understand the, uh, the point, the point about a safe spot for Craigslist, but that means, you know, that type of sale. But on the other hand, that means we have to monitor that. We've got to have staff sitting there during these transactions. Otherwise it's just the parking lot.
Right.
And, uh, so I think that's the additional, an additional impact on staff time. And we've got to be wary of that.
You know, given, given the reasons the chief just stated, um, uh, I can easily support, uh, the fact that, and, you know, tomorrow, the code is silent, so there's a tact permission. And then let's research, uh, maybe there is a Livermore authorized list of et cetera, et cetera. And maybe we do issue a, you know, five dollar permit or something to be on the authorized list. So I, I'd be interested in having staff come back, uh, as the maker of the motion, uh, outline.
And I think one of the pieces of information would be the incremental costs. You know, what would the city incur in order to set this up? So we're not saying do it, we're just saying, fully explore it and tell us what the situation is.
And that's why I felt comfortable seconding that, that motion is we're not making an actual change right now. We're, we're just asking for more information, what it would look like. Not too sure, also when I heard the idea of a, you know, a safe spot for transactions, I, you know, uh, I, I'm not too sure how that would function. But, um, I, I think that we're, you know, it, it's, it's a lot of questions and I don't know if we necessarily have the details tonight to respond to some of these questions and concerns. So additional information would be appreciated.
Okay, so if I could ask, just for the, the city clerk's clarification here, if we could have the motion restated so that we're, we're clear on what this is? I, I got it to mean that we're looking for information on, uh, delivery services and what that would.
So, wait, yeah, so the, you know, restated, see if I can do it succinctly. Want information on providing safe access for the, uh, citizens of Livermore through a delivery, um, service option and what would that look like? What kind, and, and just what are the, um, things we have to know? Just a full set of information so that we could begin to make some decisions.
Okay, and that's what you seconded, is clear for staff? Okay, uh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, unanimous, okay.
Now.
Yes.
I'd still like to try a motion, see if I can get a second on having, uh, our staff this year research and return to council uh, with the, with the range of options for zoning for only a dispensary, not anything else on the MRSA list, only a dispensary. And that doesn't obligate us to, to do it. It is, it's the research question staff asked. And this council member is saying that's the only thing on the MRSA list that seems to make sense to me for Livermore. And I think this council spent enough time on this. This is the council between now and the end of the calendar year for the council. Uh, we've got the zoning depth and expertise, the listening on this issue to at least ask staff to come back with, to say, if you want to go there at all. This is how the zoning and the League of Cities and the constructive wisdom all says, you, you ought to get there. And I'm not saying return in September with an ordinance explicitly promulgating a zoning, but go research the sideboards and come back to us with the set of policy choices if a council majority wanted to establish a dispensary. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not saying go pull milk and come back tomorrow with a, an ordinance for two dot five dispensaries. I want to see if it's even possible and if three or four, five out of five of us even like the scale of it. We may not like what staff comes back and says. You know, maybe zoning is so open that we will be the outlet mall of dispensaries if you open the door. And we might all well back away from that. So I'm not promising anybody anything. I'm just saying, can we please have the zoning learning of it?
And that you're also, part of that is to, to limit it to, if you can, if you can limit the quantity, limit the, the, the quantity of, uh, if you let in one, you have to let in five.
Right.
Okay. Okay, is there a second?
You know, I'll, I'll second that. Any information that we can, uh, we could receive, uh, any, any kind of picture of what it would look like, uh, depending on what happens in twenty sixteen? Uh, I think the sooner that we have this information and the sooner that we get a clear picture of what it actually means, the better. Um, i- if there are any examples, uh, if, if the mayor's saying, you know, that there's a, a city in the north that had problems, I, I want to hear about it. So I, I would second that. Again, it's, it's information, it's preparing ourselves and, uh, I have no problem with it.
And recognizing that everything could change in November. November tenth, it might be completely different.
And therefore all the better that if it changes on election day in November, we've had staff conduct the precursor research, if necessary, even at a December meeting, just to say something or before that. We could, we could start to get into it, know what our options are. And when the electorate locks in, we could then give further guidance so people aren't scurrying for six months going, will Livermore, won't Livermore? Will they, won't they? Because at some point, the industry's going to want to go to Sac- us in Sacramento and say, may I have a permit? I just think by then it's too late to begin the conversation. You need it, you need an endpoint.
Well, I, we.
Yes.
For the discussion, I actually think, uh, given the fact that we're years away on these other things, that there isn't a particular rush and that nothing is going to happen in the election that would matter that we have to work that quickly. What I would do is, I'm open to it, but I think, I'm also cognizant, we got limited staff time and everything else. I would sequence it, let's get the first one done and then go to the second one rather than try and dual-track it and, and rush it. I don't see any reason.
As the maker of the motion, I said, I, I'd like this council to hear the options before the end of this council year. So I'm not saying first, second, third. Uh, I, I, I think the home delivery thing is the obvious thing to, to start with. And I'm just saying, you know, this is, you know, in any, not in any given year. This is the year three seats are open, so weird thing can, can happen. And if you restart this conversation from scratch, I just think that further adds delay. And I, and I think most of us are prepared to, with further information from staff, have the zoning.
So I'm okay, I'm okay if we do the first one and then s- do the second one.
Okay, so the motion is second, um, any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, so are we down to six point oh two? All right, staff.
And to clarify there, um, that the second item is a more complex item. It will take more time and it will be very near the end of the year before that returns to you.
Very good. Thank you, and thank you, chief. Okay, and with that, I believe that takes us to, uh, matters initiated. Yes, okay, committee report. Yes, okay, committee reports and matters. By the way, thank you everyone for coming out tonight. I greatly appreciate, uh, you taking your time and providing us, uh, your experience and your input. So sincerely, thank you for that. Uh, now we're moving on to matters initiated, it's the last item on the agenda. Uh, Councilmember Spodowski.
All right, I don't have any, uh, matters to initiate, um, although my jaw is still dropped from the third largest commercial attraction, the outlet mall that, that really hasn't sunk in yet, but, um, that's just amazing. That means that we draw more than Universal Studios then, huh? Right, all right. We'll see if Harry Potter Land changes that, but I doubt it.
Or Star Wars Land.
Well, that, it'll still be Disneyland.
Yeah, that's true.
So, yeah, okay. Um, the two meetings that I have to report, April twenty-second, I attended the Tri-Valley Transportation Commission Finance Committee, where we reviewed the financial reports, uh, the draft fiscal year, uh, twenty sixteen, seventeen, operating budget, and we received various updates, including moving, uh, the majority of the funding over to LEAF in order to see a little bit higher return than what we were getting from the banks. So that was all positive. And then on, uh, April twenty-third, Saturday, uh, was Community Service Day, and I stopped by Hagaman Farms, and the mayor was there, and it's really, um, it's, it's amazing, the transformation of the farms and the ranch and, and the Heritage Guild and Sunflower Hill and all of the, the groups involved. I mean, it was real, there was activity everywhere on that site, so it was, it was great, you know, porches being potentially demolished and dry wells being dug and just, you know, things happening. It, it's great to see, um, you know, kids riding horses, and the horses have white paint on their, on their muzzles because they're rubbing up against the fence, and it was, it was really a great day, so, um, just wanted to mention that, and that's it.
Very good. Councilmember Warner?
Uh, no matters initiated, uh, two, uh, meetings. One was the, uh, Community Monitor Committee for the Altamont landfill, and, um, good news there is that there is no particular news. I mean, you don't want any real problems. One thing, though, is that, um, should note that San Francisco is no longer using it, so that means less revenue, but it also means that the site should last longer. Then the other, uh, meeting I went to was, uh, Labma, and that's the pipeline that pumps the, uh, wastewater out into the bay, and that, again, is, um, nothing exciting coming out of there. I would note that, um, the equipment is getting towards the end of its use, useful life, and that, uh, but that means that you'll have to figure out how to fund that some, but that, those questions will start in the future.
Vice Mayor Gary?
Uh, two meetings, the, uh, monthly meeting of the Livermore Downtown Inc., nothing to report out of that, other than this coming weekend is their biggest, largest, most spectacular fundraiser, so it's, it's the weekend to come to downtown, uh, Livermore enough said, go to Livermore Downtown Inc. for all the info on their website. Uh, also, uh, the, the mayor and I attended the Livermore Pleasant and Joint Liaison Committee that meets between, as representatives of the two councils periodically. Uh, mainly, it was a transportation-centric meeting, but Pleasant and staff also asked a question about Livermore sewer charges, uh, to the Ruby Hill Development that dates to the time of construction. That has some interesting twists and turns, and I would just appreciate the city manager maybe giving a quick update memo and what we were presented from the other council members, and then, just in our Friday package, let the other three know what, what's on the table for staff to, to research, and we'll come back to all of you at some point. If we, if anything is doable, we'll come back to, have to come back to the full council with it.
Very good, thank you. Uh, on April fourteenth, uh, the, uh, Livermore Morning, Afternoon Rotary and, uh, the Rotary Foundation dedicated the band stand at Carnegie Park. It is very cool. Uh, it was a, a much larger project than anybody had ever imagined, but it is absolutely beautiful. And I said, if there's an earthquake, that's where I'm going to be, because that's going to be the last, uh, structure standing in, in Livermore. Uh, April twentieth, Shelby Anderson, uh, from our Water Resources Division retired after thirty-five years with the city of Livermore, so thank, uh, thank Shelby for that. Again, I was at the, uh, the Labma meeting, where we were talking about the budget and the operations report. Uh, April twenty-second, I attended the Red, Blue and Gold Event, where, uh, it, they recognized the first responders in the Tri-Valley, and we recognized Officer Dave Morris, uh, from Livermore, and also Fernando Carranza from the Livermore Pleasant Fire Department. These men have provided exemplary service to this, uh, community, so we wanted to recognize them. Uh, again, on April twenty-third, we had the Community Service Day, over six hundred volunteers, uh, painting, uh, planting, washing windows, just doing a tremendous amount of work, and that was, uh, the community of the Saint Charles Catholic Church, uh, Saint Michael's Catholic Church, Asbury Methodist, uh, Maritoma Church, the Savior, our Savior Lutheran Ministries, uh, Trinity Baptist, Cedar Grove Community Church, uh, and the, uh, Latter Day Saints, uh, church had this, uh, barbecue for everybody, so the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints put on a big barbecue for everybody that helped out. So it was just this wonderful community event, coming together and serving the community to make it a better place. Uh, and also the, uh, event at Hagaman Farms, uh, and the Summer Hill Farms, and Robertson Park. So it was, uh, an amazing event, uh, and the whole community come out there. So with that, uh, that's all I've got, and with that, uh, we will adjourn to the next meeting, May ninth, right here. Thank you.